Fiore is present. First item on our agenda is the disposal of surplus equipment.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Second, Dr. Merrill?
Can we ask for a reason why we want to table this?
I think we need to look at these. These were purchased recently, so I want to make sure these are best use before we make such a drastic measure.
And I also think it would be advantageous on the part of the district to do an inventory of our desks and see what buildings could use some new desks and what buildings we could swap out some of our older desks for our new desks.
I will support my colleague's motion, second half.
Okay, then the matter is tabled. Next item is bills payable warrants. First, a fiscal 23 and the amount to $29,903.80.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing on all the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so voted. With regard to the fiscal 24 warrant, we have a communication. Attention Finance and Law Subcommittee, I want to bring to your attention a matter that requires discussion at tonight's F and L meeting. We have received an invoice from Dorsey and Son for $303,000 for services rendered under the HVAC grant awarded to TPS last year. This would increase the FY24 warrant from $568,617.05 to $871,617.05 if approved. I kindly request that you approve this invoice for tonight's agenda. Doing so would allow us to compensate a local small business owner on time. If this invoice is not added to the current warrant, it will be pushed to the 9/6 warrant for approval, meaning the city council will not approve until September 14th. Your support in this matter would be greatly appreciated as it aligns with our commitment to support local small businesses and ensure prompt payment. Please respond at your earliest convenience with your decision or any questions. I appreciate your consideration. Best regards, John D. Cabral, Superintendent.
Motion to include the $303,000 invoice in this week's warrant.
Second on discussion, just so the public at home understands that $303,000 did come from a grant awarded to us. What was the total amount of the grant?
$1.2 million.
Okay, I recall that. And these are services that have been rendered, and of course, we don't want to delay payment because as a former small business owner, I know how that can really screw us up. So anyway, I just wanted to make sure.
Again, this is not our regular appropriation, this is grant funding, so not the same. In terms of any open meeting law questions, the warrant itself was already on the agenda, so in addition to it should suffice.
Absolutely, totally in favor, Mr. Chairman, so I do second that motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing on all the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted. And finally, a facilities update from facility due work orders. Mrs. Moynihan.
As you can see, each month, we've been putting a facility due work orders update by our facilities director, Mr. Freitas. And as you hear, this report shows that it was for pretty much the entire fiscal year and a little bit more from July 1st through August 10th, 2023. So the amount of work orders were over 2,800, and of those 2,800 work orders, Taunton Public Schools occupied 67% of the work orders of 2,027 work orders for Taunton Public Schools within the 58 buildings from the city. As you can see, again, it's something that we do receive each month that Mr. Freitas has been creating, and what I will ask him now going forward, we'll do it for the next fiscal year, for fiscal FY24.
Motion to include the documentation in accepting.
I'll second that on discussion. I guess, you know, I'm not a big fan of bar charts, but it's here in front of us. My question is this, are we ready to go on September, when are we coming back, August 30th? August 31st? Are we ready to go on August 31st? Our buildings are all maintained, safety-wise?
That should be a presentation this evening.
Okay, but, I mean, since this is in front of us, just basically.
As of August 16th, we are working diligently, the custodians, the groundskeepers, city officials, everyone is working to the ultimate goal of opening up our buildings, which I don't see anything foreseeable future, that everything will be okay for the opening day.
That sounds.
Nothing that would prevent us from not opening.
Correct.
Unless something catastrophic happens between now.
Please.
Right, which we know that's unfortunate, that can happen. I mean, you know, I understand there's multitudine work orders, but I think, you know, as long as our buildings are ready to open for the school year, our staff are safe, our students are safe, and everything's working, that's excellent, excellent work.
And the report also serves another purpose, because we get charged 75% on indirect costs. So of all the work orders that are out there, the 2,967% belong to the school department. So again, we're just trying to make sure that we are getting our fair share of work done based on the indirect cost charge.
Excellent, so I did second that motion.
All right, so there's a motion to accept the facilities due report. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, all those opposed, so voted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, we're out of here.
Everyone, thank you for joining us. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our children and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Thank you. Roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan.
Mr. Palowski is absent, Mr. Venus.
Present.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present, Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. George.
Present.
Mr. Lura.
Present.
And Dr. Demello.
Present.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of July 19th and August 2nd.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. At this time, we have public input, Chairman Demello.
Thank you, Mayor. For public input, in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23(c), we kindly request that individuals wishing to provide public input sign up in advance. A copy of the regulation and guidelines will be provided upon sign-up. Individuals be asked to state their name and address for the record. The amount of time addressed to individual will have to speak will be determined by the number of people who sign the register and will be announced prior to the start of the public input portion of the meeting. Mayor, tonight, we have two citizens signed up, and first on the agenda, we have Ms. Catherine Cunningham from 135 Shore Street. Topic is honoring Mrs. Hady Cunningham. Ms. Cunningham, please. And there's really no time restriction, so I should say that, thank you.
But I don't want to take away your precious time. I just want to say thank you, Honorable Mayor, Sean O'Connell, thank you, and Gregory, and I know most of you personally, the superintendent, Mr. Cabral, Gil, Mr. George, Louis, we've been family friends for many, many years. I'm here to say thank you for honoring my mother. She's been gone for almost 23 years this year, and she was good friends with Mr. George's grandmother, his mother, Jackie's mother, and they worked together at Epo School. When we came in 1968, my father was on, we came from Fort Sill, Oklahoma, to Taunton, Massachusetts. We had no idea where we were going. My father was going to Vietnam. My mother had a sister here, Ally Mccone, who was married to Calvin Mccone, Sr., and Taunton was a nightmare. We're a military family, and we came, and we're like, where is this place? I was only 10 years old, and we put them on a plane in Providence. Do you remember Providence Airport? It was one room, everybody's there, you went through one door, came out one door. And my father disappeared into this jungle called Vietnam for several years, and my mother on Monday went to the superintendent's office and got a job. And I think Fred Lopes, I don't know if he was a principal at, does anybody recall Fred Lopes?
On his father's husband, who was a long-term school committee member and county commissioner, yes.
Yes, and he hired my mother, I believe, and she started working in the Taunton Public School system. But she was here to make a difference. We stayed after my father came back from Vietnam, because she saw that there was a need for people of color to be in positions of authority. Nobody would ever see a person of color. It took a long time, she was the only one for 32 years. And, but she loved this city, she believed in integration. She came up from the deep south in Jim Crow and segregation. She exposed us to that life. We didn't know, because we were young, but she wanted us to see it, to try to understand it as young children. So my mother would travel from Fort Sill, Kentucky, Fort Belvoir, Fort Meade, Maryland, we'd go down south. And it was something to live that life. And when she got here, her and her sisters said, we were so lucky to escape Jim Crow and segregation. They had opportunities to make a difference. They were decent human beings. The only difference is the color of their skin. But they, we were church-going, we went to the Baptist Church of All Nations. She was active in civic and community groups. She started the first African-American social club where they raised money and provided scholarship for local students going off to college. We had a great middle-class life, but she, when my father came back, she said, Taunton, I gotta stay here, there's a need for me here. And we stayed, and then, you know, as a military family, we spent time wherever he was stationed in the U.S. Army. And so I am so privileged to stand here in honor of my mother, who went to a historically black college called Bethune-Cookman College of Daytona Beach, Florida. My mother was a native Floridian. And, but she always believed in education. Education will get you out of poverty. And she tried to get as many black kids to stay in school as well as white kids, brown kids, any kid that showed up at her house. And so we were the house where all kids were welcome. And she was an amazing individual. I loved her, I was her problem child, but I grew up eventually. But I just want to say thank you for the honor that you're granting on my dear mother. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham, for sharing all of that with us. We certainly do honor your mom as well, and we're pleased to be doing that very soon, Mr. Chair.
Yes, the celebration is on our school committee calendars, will be on Saturday, October 14th. We will take that opportunity to not only honor Mrs. Cunningham, Mrs. Carmo, and Mr. Castle at the Mulcahy School, and we'll also have an opportunity for an open house, for the public to come in, not only to celebrate with us, but to take a visit through the school for those that don't, have never been in the new school. So it's quite a celebration. Next up, we have Nina Mendoza Carmo, newly married, Nina Mendoza Carmo, from 71 Whale Street, Taunton, Mass.
Hello, good afternoon, good evening, what time is it? It's evening already. I just wanted to say thank you as well. I know personally, I've sent probably 500 emails, and every Carmo in Taunton has also sent 500 emails, so I apologize for that. But I would, he's laughing because he probably received them. Thank you guys a lot for honoring my mom, it's been 10 years since she passed, and I spend all day doing phonemic awareness and sounding out words and sight words with kids in my tutoring company, so I really appreciate keeping the Carmo name and education in Taunton, and I just wanted to say sincerely, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And it's really nice and heartwarming to see the pride and the love for your families and that we get to share in that with you. So it looks like that's it for public input. Could I get a motion to go out of order?
So moved.
We do food services first, and then, okay, so, all right, so we're gonna take Peter Cor first, and then followed by the TPS summer facilities project update, and then we do food services, that's the only business we're gonna go on. Reversing again?
Motion made.
All right, Mr. Cabral, why don't you tell us what we're doing this?
I believe we need to take up Peter Cor, the model, and then address the food services presentation, followed by the facility.
Okay.
So that's the motion?
Yes.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Okay, so we have some representatives from the Cor family here this evening, I believe. Thank you for joining us.
Motion to invite them in.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted.
Hello, Christine Banksen and my sister Melissa. I'd like to thank Mayor O'Connell and Superintendent Cabral and members of the school committee. Thank you for allowing me to present my request for the Peter Cor Free Ice Cream Cone Day to all the children in the city of Taunton. We would like permission to pass out free ice cream cone coupons to all the elementary students in Taunton. Usually, we try to pass them out the first week of school. My dad's birthday was on September 3rd, so we try to like to pass them out and start on September 3rd. And the two ice cream stores that are participating are Tom &amp; Jimmy's and Kev's, and they've agreed to accept the coupons from September 3rd to September 20th. And then to be able to allow us to hang a poster in every building to recognize the sponsors who donated for this event. And last year, we feel it was a big success, and we're hoping to continue it again this year. Thank you for your time, and the Cor family.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing with the community and involving the community in remembering Peter Cor.
Thank you.
He was a great man here.
Motion to approve is presented by the Cor family.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye, on discussion, Mayor, if I may.
On discussion.
The only issue I have with this, this is the second annual, and I think school committee has not gotten a coupon yet, so if there's any extra coupons, kids first, we'll be there waiting, okay? Mr. Venus, I know you want to come, I'll pick you up, Mr. Venus, how's that, okay? Mr. Fiore?
Mr. Cor, we're still around, he's been the first in line.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted, thank you. And now we will go to the food services presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like at this time to call up Assistant Superintendent Brenda Moynihan. As you are aware, food service and facilities fall under the director, the, sorry, the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, so I'd like Mrs. Moynihan to introduce Glenn Motta, our Food Service Director, and then after she will introduce Mark Freitas, who's the Director of Facilities. So as a school committee, you have a lot to be proud of, you have invested heavily in our facilities and in our infrastructure, and you've also invested heavily in making sure that we have the appropriate personnel or the appropriate staffing levels to oversee these two large entities. So without further ado, I will turn things over to Mrs. Moynihan, who will introduce Mr. Motta first, the Director of Food Services, will be followed by Mark Freitas, the Director of Facilities.
Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. I'd like to introduce Glenn Motta, who is finishing up his first year as our Food Services Director. He had been working previously under the direction of Karen Papa while he was the Assistant Director, and Glenn has a definitely different personality, comma, than a Karen Papa, but has been quite effective and having such a successful year in his first year. So I'll turn it over to Glenn Motta, so he can let you know what's been going on in our cafeterias for the past year.
Thank you, Brenda. Good evening, everyone, thank you for allowing me time to present tonight to the school committee. I want to get, have this presentation tonight, just to give you a general overview of how and why we operate the way we do, just so you have some backend knowledge that this is what we do, how we do it. If you have any questions from your constituents, you're able to answer some of those questions. I'll preface that by saying, if anyone does have any questions, please reach out to me. You can get me by phone in the office, you can get me by email, and also, if you want to stop in, my office is at the Taunton High School, right next to the cafeteria, by all means, come on in, we'll give you a full tour of the operations and show you exactly what we do in food service. So with that said, I want to start off by doing a brief introduction. As Brenda had said, I came to the district in July, July 10th, actually, of 2019, and took the position of Assistant Food Service Director and worked under the previous director, Karen Papa. Last July, Karen left us, and I took over Acting Director of Food Services and was officially appointed, I think on September 5th of 2022. Prior to that, I had 12 years' experience working for the second-largest food service contract management company, Aramark. I had 12 years there and worked in several different lines of business. I started out in sports and entertainment, which encompassed stadiums, arenas, convention centers. So if anyone's been to Fenway Park and they bought a hot dog, or a soda, or a t-shirt, or a hat, it was through Aramark employee, Aramark staff, that's who I worked for. I also spent time in the healthcare line of business. I was the Food Service Director for a 200-bed acute care hospital in Rhode Island, and then I moved over to K through 12 education. I was the Food Service Director overseeing simultaneously two districts in Rhode Island, one of similar size as Taunton. We had nine schools, 7,500 students, and the other district I had was a smaller district, five schools, about 3,200 students. So, and prior to that, I had 20 years in the restaurant industry, managing various different types of restaurants, casual dining, fine dining, banquet facilities, and private country clubs. So I've spent my entire, basically, working career in food service. So our Taunton Public School food service program, there's many layers to it, and it's quite complex. Most people just think we serve food to kids, and that's pretty much it. But when we look at it, there's several levels. There's the USDA, United States Department of Agriculture. If we look at the org chart, basically, the USDA would be the CEO of a corporation. Under that, we have the National School Lunch Program, which is a program that we work under. Then we have oversight by DESI, the Department of Education, so they kind of are the bosses that we answer to here on the district level. And then the program we operate under right now currently is the CEB, or the Community Eligibility Program. So as you can tell, there's many layers to it, and I'm going to try to go through and give you a little brief understanding of each layer. So the USDA, they have probably 1,000 different departments in the USDA. Their basic mission and core responsibility is to provide a safety net for millions of Americans who are food insecure and for developing and promoting dietary guidance based on scientific evidence. So what we do, believe it or not, on the level here, in serving our kids in the cafeterias, is all based on scientific evidence and rules and regulations that the USDA has set forth. And the programs that oversee child nutrition, the Food Nutrition Services Program, it's FNS, they oversee nutrition programs, and then they also oversee SNAP, which is a municipal program that hands out food benefits, and they also oversee emergency food and assistance, among many other programs. And then someone that we work closely with is the Center for Nutrition on Policy and Promotion. They basically give us the whys, why we do things, and lay down the rules and regulations, again, all based on scientific information and nutritional needs. So those are the upper layers of the USDA. And the program that we operate under is the National School Lunch Program. It was founded by Harry Truman, I believe, in 1941, and since then, it's gone through a couple of reiterations. It had a little reiteration during the Obama administration, during the Trump administration, and we have, you know, another general election coming up soon, so we'll see if there are any reiterations with the next administration when they come in. But basically, what the NSLP does, it's a federally assisted meal program operating in public and private schools. It provides nutritional balance, low or no cost breakfast and lunch to children each day. Now, the USDA, as I said, administers the program at the federal level. So what they do is participating schools receive cash subsidies as well as USDA foods, and I'll get into that in a little minute, in a minute, for each reimbursable meal served, okay? And then the states, so Massachusetts and DESI, select all of the USDA foods that we'll receive, and they're purchased by, from the USDA. An important note, and so I put it in bold down at the bottom, is all of the National School Lunch Program meals must meet the federal requirements in order for us to get our cash reimbursement. So what happens is, if we serve a meal that meets all the federal requirements, we receive a reimbursement for each student that takes a meal. And it's important, because, you know, I hear a lot of feedback from the parents, I hear a lot of feedback from teachers and administrators, and they're like, well, they don't like the milk. Unfortunately, to make a reimbursable complete meal, each child has to take a milk. And whether it's a double-edged sword, whether they throw it away, they give it to a friend, or they don't drink it, it's part of the regulation. So we can't allow a student to go through with a meal that is not part of the reimbursable National School Lunch Program. So we try to assist the students, and a lot of parents don't understand this, which is kind of why I'm giving you a little brief overview of it. But if the students come through and they're missing their half a cup of fruit, usually our managers will talk to the child, say, would you like to take a box of raisins? Would you like to take an apple? And again, that's to make a complete meal as they go through, and then we're allowed to get our federal reimbursements from that. So on top of that, we also receive USDA foods, and I like to kind of describe that as it's like the game Monopoly. So the state decides what foods are going to bring in to the state, everything from chicken breasts, hamburger patties, fruits, vegetables, and we have each year entitlement that we get based on how many reimbursable meals we serve each year, and we are given a dollar amount, and basically, we're given Monopoly money. And so we purchase items, basically, we go through in a shopping list and a shopping cart that we're going to utilize in the district, but again, it's subsidized and it's given to us by the USDA, and it's all based on how many reimbursements we do. So not only do we get cash subsidies for our reimbursable meals, we also get foods that come in that are utilized in the district. Any questions? I'm sure there's going to be quite a few, but feel free to fire away. Okay. Okay, so then the next kind of branch under the tree here is the Department of Ed. So they're in charge of administering the school lunch program and the USDA food subsidy programs on the state level. So we do answer to DESI. DESI also conducts a district administrative review and our procurement reviews, which I just went through each one of those this year. So they're fairly intensive reviews, they come in and basically go through your program, audit your program according to the USDA guidelines. So we just had both of our reviews this year, came through with some, some pretty good results. Naturally, they're there to find some things that aren't copacetic or aren't up to standard, and then you have to do a cap report, which they sign off for, and you move forward with your program. So DESI also oversees our operations for our summer food service programs. I was fortunate enough to have an administrative review on my summer program, so we had three reviews this year. We're not due for those reviews again for another four years. So everything went fairly well, so my first year was extremely busy with DESI. We got to be good friends. And the last thing I had mentioned, this is a twofold slide, is under the school lunch program, we have recently been accepted as of last year. we have recently been accepted, as of last year, into the Community Eligibility Provision Program. And that's again administered by the USDA. And what that program does is allow schools and local educational agencies located in low-income areas to provide free breakfast and lunch to all students, okay? In the past, when I first started in the district, and it wasn't that long ago, there was a process. We accepted applications from families, all based on income. And we would make three classes of students, their eligibility. We had full pay students, which meant that these families were able to provide meals or to have them buy meals at full cost due to their financial position. We had students who were reduced. So based on their household incomes, they could receive a meal at a reduced cost. And then we had families who received the SNAP benefits and other benefits. They were eligible for free meals. So there were three tiers of students in our district. Last year, we applied for CEP and we were actually accepted into the CE program, CEP program. So we were able to provide free breakfast and lunch to all kids in the district. And the way, or the reason we were able to do that is there is a formula and it's based on identified students. So if we had an identified student and our percentage of identified students within the district is 40% or greater, we were eligible for CEP. And what that means is, basically USDA says, we don't, we're not looking at your free, your reduced students. We're not looking at your paid students. What we want to see, and you need to provide us with, is the number of identified students who are receiving SNAP benefits, okay? And then we're going to look at that percentage. We're going to divide that number into your overall enrollment, and that's going to give us a percentage. And I got to tell you, we weren't eligible when I started in 2019. We had a couple of schools that were eligible and you could divide it up in schools or the entire district. This year, when I reapplied for the CEP, our identified student percentage was 51%. So basically, more than half of our students enrolled in the district right now are in need or are food insecure. So it's a pretty big number. When I first started in K through 12, USDA standard was 51% before you were eligible. They've since pandemic have seen that, you know, there's a lot of families, again, that didn't get back to work. So they've lowered the percentage down to 40. But right now, the city of Taunton or the District of Taunton is at 51%. So that's quite a significant number. We'll see that, how it plays out into our meals that we served last year versus the meals in 21, 22 versus last year. And here's another layer too. It was just added last Wednesday night, if you're aware or not. But Massachusetts joined a growing number of states adopting the Universal Free School Meals Program. The funding in the state budget included universal free meals for all students kindergarten through high school. So Governor Healy signed this in last Wednesday night. And her quote from the Boston newspapers was, "It's an investment in childhood nutrition that's also removing a source of stress from our schools and our homes." So right now, we are still a CEP district, if anyone asks you. But we are going to operate this year under the Universal Free School Meals because that kind of supersedes the CPA. So you kind of, are you okay? I'm just saying, you're rolling your eyes. It is a lot. There's so many. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So if any of you can, I hear you. No. So if any of your constituents ask you, you can say, yes, we are operating this year for one year under the Universal Free Meals Program. But we will operate under CEP up until 2027. So we're covered. So even if this money from the state goes away next year, we can still provide up until 2017, when we have to reapply free meals to all students in our district. So that's the good news. But this is the latest and greatest. I said, it just came out last Wednesday. So I want to also give you a little understanding on our annual budget. Our annual budget is obviously generated from our yearly revenues. And those revenues, again, are the USDA and the state reimbursements. So we get about 2% of our, the state reimbursement equals about 2% of what the USDA reimburses us for. And then we also have cash sales that we take in on a daily basis, an annual basis, from our schools for à la carte sales. So those three revenue streams are basically what has generated our top-line revenue. And then we have our annual expenses, our food, our labor, and our fixed and variable expenses. Our budget is a self-sustaining budget and it's not subsidized by the annual Taunton Public Schools budget. So we are an independent budget. We don't take any funds from, you know, I don't go to Brenda and John and say, hey, I need, you know, a couple hundred thousand to pay payroll this year. So we basically subsidize ourself through all of the meals that we serve on an annual basis. And then if we do have a revenue surplus at the end of the year, it has to go back into the Food Service Program for allowable expenses. So if John and Brenda called me up and said, hey, our budget ran out and I need some Chromebooks for kids. Can we borrow 50,000 or can you subsidize that? We're not allowed to by USDA regulations. We can't subsidize the school budget. It all has to stay within the program. So as far as our personnel in the Food Service Department, right now, we have an admin team of total of five. There's myself. We have two administrative secretaries and two operational support folks. Our senior cooks, who are basically our managers at the locations, we have nine throughout the district. And we have a total of either full or part-time, 61 staff members at all the high school, middle school, elementary school. We also currently have about five subs that work for us as well. And here's just a breakdown of how many staff members we have. I think the interesting thing to take away here, if we look at staff members and our labor hours per week, it ties in directly, it's correlated to the meals per week. So if we look at Bennett, which is one of our smaller schools, we have labor hours of 75, average meals per week, about 1,350. If we just go on a diagonal to Mulcahy and we'll see the labor hours at 220. We have a senior cook, a cook, and six part-time helpers. But you look down and you look at the meals per week, they serve as 5,500 meals per week. That's our largest elementary that we have right now. And they're really pumping out meals every day. So there is a formula to figure out labor hours versus the meals you serve. And that's what we use to dictate how many staff members we have at each location. And then, as you can see, meal counts go up with our middle schools as well as labor hours. Again, Friedman is the largest of our middle schools right now. And then if we look at, I like to look at this one because that's where my office is and that's kind of where we live a lot. If we look at the meals we're doing at the high school per week, 9,150. That's a lot of hard work right there. So here's a comparison from 21, 22. It was a non-COVID year, a non-pandemic year. And this directly shows a correlation between what I was talking about when I started and we were below 50% with those identified students receiving benefits. And last year, when we were at 51%. If we look 21, 22 at our breakfast meals, 375,000. When we look last year, 490,000, almost 491,000 meals or breakfast meals. I'm sorry, that's an increase of 115,000 meals in 180 days. So if you think about that, it's pretty staggering. Our lunch from 21, 22 was 854,000. Last year, it jumped up to almost 950,000. Again, about a 95,000 meal increase over the year. And then we look down to our, sorry, that was lunch. Our breakfast meals, the same thing, our averages per day, 2,000 breakfast per day versus 2,700. Lunch, 4,700. We used to hit 5,000 occasionally and that was a big day for us. You know, last year, we were averaging 52 on a regular basis. And then our total meals, if we look at the comparison, 6,800 to almost 8,000. So during that course of one year, we have really served a lot more meals than we have in the past. And we have an increased staff size. We have an increased labor hours. We've been running at the same pace. So the staff's done an incredible job pulling this together over the course of last year. And I anticipate we'll probably see those numbers go up over the next couple of years. I know there's been an influx of people into the city of Taunton. So I'm sure we'll be getting more students in over the next couple of years enrolled. So those numbers will continue to go up. I'd like to talk just briefly on our lunch meal offerings. A lot of schools, when pandemic hit and even coming out of pandemic, a lot of districts, I should say, went back to the old business model of the schools and it was one hot entree. And you know what? If your kids didn't like it, so sorry, this is what we're serving. And it was again, due to the high costs of the paper products, all this food costs have gone up. We stayed true to what we were offering in our meals. And, you know, at our high school, we have two hot entree selections every day. We have a full salad and deli bar. We have two pizza stations. We have a cold lunch that's available. We have the Tiger Grill, which serves an additional two hot entrees a day. On each line, we have a fresh fruit and veggie bar. And we also have a snack bar where kids can buy healthy à la carte snacks. Our middle schools kind of mimic our high schools. We also serve two hot entrees. We have pizza on a daily basis. We have a cold lunch on a daily basis. And again, the fresh fruit and veggie bars and the snack bars. And elementaries, it's pared down a little bit just because we just don't have the facilities. We don't have the size and the serveries or the kitchens. But we still offer on a daily basis two hot selections, a cold selection, our fruit and veggie bars and our snack bars. So we haven't scaled down any of our offerings since pandemic and coming out of pandemic. We're fortunate that we're doing the number of meals that we are each year and we're able to be able to afford and continue to serve a fairly robust menu. But if you do go on other school districts throughout the state, I go and look for different ideas. You tend to run out of menu items after a while and menu ideas. But I have noticed is a number of districts have shrunk in their menu just because of the rising costs and, you know, labor it takes to get these meals produced. And I just briefly wanted to touch on our summer food service program. So we're finishing it up tomorrow. We had 14 sites throughout the city of Taunton. Nine sites were school sites. And we averaged about 4,000 meals, breakfast and lunch, at those nine sites. And we had five community sites, Girls Inc., Highland Hills Community Center, Parks and Recreation over at the Hopewell Pavilion. And the YMCA had two locations. And we averaged about 1,950 meals per day at those locations. And that's running with a staff of 10 people. So it's myself, my two admins, my two operational, and then like five part-time employees that we bring back for the summertime. And we'll continue to operate our summer food service program as we go through the next few years. So a couple of little projects we have on the horizon, I just wanted to bring to your attention. Right now, we're in the process of updating our software system. And that's our operating system that we use for the POS, front of house and back of house operations. We have some kitchen and cafeteria equipment upgrades we're doing. This year, I'm looking to do, I had a very successful partnership with the culinary program at the district I operated in Rhode Island. So we had a little change over at the high school now. We have a new director, a new chef over there. So I'm going to try to do some programs in partnership with them. And then our big plans for hopefully, when we get back in September of 2024, is a complete renovation of our Taunton High School serving area. So touch briefly on the new software system we're getting. It has point of, front of house, point of service. It's also, we can make online payments, which we currently can do right now. There's a nutritional website that's attached with this new software. We're looking to do digital menu boards in the cafeterias. And also, if we ever had to go back to the old style with accepting applications, this whole software system accepts applications electronically online. So it is a huge, huge time saver. I don't think we'll ever get back to taking applications. I think we'll remain CEP for a long time. But if we ever had to, this new software allows us to accept applications online. Back of the house, some of the features it has is menu planning, which it creates and modifies menus. They're all USDA compliant. So a lot of the homework and brain work that we're doing now is already done for us in this software system. It has an inventory management program, which we're doing everything manually now in spreadsheets. And one of the huge benefits is their production reports. Right now, we do handwritten production reports. We've been doing it for ages. On average, each manager spends about a half an hour a week doing their production reports, handwriting them, filing them, and their documentation that's needed to be saved for DESI. So you take a half an hour times 10 managers. It's five hours a week. You multiply that times 40 weeks. We're spending 200 hours in a year writing out production sheets. And if we average the pay of one of my managers, you're looking at about $5,700 a year spent just on them writing a production sheet. In this new back of the house software system we have, it's all done automatically. So the menus are created, the production sheets are automatically created. We don't have to print them. We don't have to put them in a filing cabinet. And then when I got to go, oh, I got to cook chicken nuggets again. How many do I have to make? Everything would be electronically installed in files and it's all cloud-based. So there are so many efficiencies with the back of the house portion of this software, which we currently don't have with our old software, that we'll definitely see some efficiencies, money savings, cost savings. Some of the upgrades we're doing in the CAFS, ETE. We just got a new, very excited about this, double stack Blodgett convection oven, which our manager doesn't know yet. So when she comes back, she's going to be truly excited. She'll be ecstatic. So if you all want to go over to ETE the first day of school and watch a reaction, it should be fun. Martin Middle School, when they did over the kitchen there, they actually put two steaming units next to each other. There was an access panel for a service on this side, but the machine that's married up to it, you can't access it. So that machine hasn't worked in about three years because you literally have to disassemble it, take it apart. Because when they were installed, they were installed next to each other. So we separate, un-siamese them, if you will. So we'll have two acting steaming units, again, working more efficiently. We also, at Martin Middle School, we're going to get new tables for the cafeteria. They will be color coordinated with the school colors. So they're going to have a green top with yellow seats. The green didn't come out too well in my picture there. THS, thanks to Mr. Cabral. Superintendent Cabral, he was an advocate to do over the bottom right picture of the THS senior lounge seating area. And that was a new addition last year we brought in. If you can see, there's, it's a really nice section for the seniors to sit in. And that's where they go and have their lunch. Great seating we got last year, but the tiles didn't match, so we redid that. Also, we're doing a complete hardware upgrade throughout the district. So all of our computers will be new starting in September. We're in the process of that right now. And then again, partnership with the THS Culinary Department. Some of the things I've done in the past is student samplings. So if we're going to have a menu item on, we get culinary involved. We let them create that menu item down in culinary, where they have their kitchen facility. We let them, allow them to bring it up and then serve it while the kids are going in line, prior to them going in and saying, hey, you know, we're going to have the, you know, the fish tacos on in two weeks. Here's a little sample cup. Try it. Let us know if you like it. So it's a way of getting the culinary students involved. It's also a way of getting feedback from the student body. We'd like them also to develop some student surveys. We'll have them analyze the data, provide feedback. So it'll help them if any of them decide to go into a culinary career. Obviously, these are all good little tools to have. And then also, we'd like them to help develop front-of-house promotions and menu themes. So every day, I mean, I'm sure you know it's, you know, ice cream cone day. One day, it's Taco Tuesdays. Every day you wake up, it's, you know, chocolate chip Thursdays or something. So we want them to help develop those type of programs and really get involved in the food service program. So we'll start working in September with the Culinary Department. And then lastly, with a hopefully anticipated completion date of August of 2024, we'd like to completely redo the interior serving area of the Taunton High School. We did, over the past couple of years, we have revamped the entire seating area. So if you've gone over there, you've seen it's pretty amazing. It does look like a campus dining facility rather than a high school cafeteria. If you haven't seen it, please take a stroll through. And we'd like to kind of redo the inside serving area with all new equipment, new branding. I just hung some new directional signage today. And I didn't get a chance to take a picture and get it off to show you. But it was amazing just putting up little signs telling kids, this is the hot entree line, pizza line, snack bar line. And I experienced it firsthand last year in September. Typically, my role was to go out first day of a couple of days of school and go to the middle schools, elementary schools, make sure everything was going okay. Ms. Papa would stay back at the high school, keep an eye on the high school. But last year, I was the only one there, so I was at the high school. And we have the eighth graders coming in, who now are only used to going in one line and coming out the other way. And it, all the foods on these one lines. Well, in the high school, we have pizza line, hot entree line, salad bar, deli line. It was like trying to herd cats. They had no idea where to go. And they only have 18 minutes to eat. So my staff and I positioned ourselves in the cafeteria for about the first two weeks. And we were like, anybody want pizza? Go to this line, anybody want? So we kind of engaged of all printing and they came up with some great signs. So if you do come through now, every service line is labeled on what it is. So hopefully that eliminates some of the confusion, give the kids a little more time to enjoy their lunch. I think that's pretty much it. If anyone has any questions, again, I'm open for questions or feel free to reach out to me anytime. Like I said, come by, check out our operations. My office is in the cafeteria, right next to the cafeteria at the high school. We'd be more than happy to see you come by.
Thank you, Mr. Mott. That was an excellent presentation, very informative. Things have certainly changed in lunch since any of us were in school, I think, for the better.
Definitely has, for the better, exactly.
If there are no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I'm celebrating my sixth year in the school committee. I don't believe I've ever seen such a comprehensive presentation as you presented tonight from the food service department. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All acronyms aside, okay? What's happening on August 30th, August 31st regarding the new legislation with Massachusetts? So I understand that you had to count meals for the reimbursement, right?
Yep.
And everybody had to get that carton of milk, even though they're not drinking it. So what's taking place with the new school year regarding the, the food count and what's on that tray? Because my, my concern is this. And I asked you the question, I'm expecting the answer, but I'm sorry to preempt you. If there's a carton of milk that the student is obligated to take, at the end of that line, is there a place for that carton of milk to go that can be recirculated or given to somebody? Of course, if it's not expired, of course, it's a same day type of thing. I'm just concerned with, with, with waste.
Yep.
And now that we are a little bit different, how, how is this food count taking place now?
Yeah, well, unfortunately, again, it's a double edged sword. Originally, when the Foods National School Lunch Program rolled out, it was a serve type situation. So everything was put on the plate and given to the student. So right now, it went to offer versus serve. That's the way we operate. I didn't put that in there because that can get really confusing.
What did you say? I'm sorry.
We, we run offer versus serve. So that's a program we will, we operate. Offer versus serve. So we, you can either go by serve, meaning I'm going to take everything that we're, we have available today, our starch, our vegetable, our protein, our meat, and put it on a plate and hand it to you.
Okay.
And that's a reimbursable meal. All we offer you, five components we have to offer. And it's a grain, it's a half a cup of fruit, a half a cup of vegetables, a protein. And you can take in offer versus serve in a lunch, you, you are required to take three of those. So maybe I didn't explain myself really well with the milk. So they don't have to take everything, but they have to take the three required, okay, out of the five. And breakfast, it's two out of four. So I didn't want to get anybody really confused with, I could have put those slides in and then really kind of drill down. It shows you how there's still going to be food waste, the way the program's designed, unfortunately. But they did allow us to go offer versus serve. So instead of five components that we're putting on a plate, we only have to put three. So if the kid, child says, I am not going to, or I don't like potatoes, that's fine. We don't have to give you the potatoes, but you are required to take three. So you, you are required to take, do you like the fruit? Yes, I do. Do you like the vegetable? Yes, I like broccoli today. So we can put the broccoli on. I don't know if that clarifies anymore. There is going to be the food waste. And again, I, I misspoke with the milk. The milk is in the summer program. Milk, they have to have a milk for breakfast. It's not required for lunch.
Okay. So, uh, so every, so we have 8,950 students. So every student's entitled to a free lunch.
Correct.
I'm still perplexed to how this is all going to work. I mean, with the, with, with the new legislation out there. And again, there's going to be probably more food waste than ever.
Yes, it's so, just because, I, I guess, the last layer I added on it was, was with the universal free lunch. We still operate exactly the way we did. USDA, we still have to follow their guidelines. It doesn't matter whether the governor signed the bill or not. We're still operating under the USDA guidelines through the National School Lunch Program.
Because we are over that 40%.
Yep. So we're still going to operate exactly the way we did. It benefits, what governing, Healy signed into benefits districts that weren't CEP.
Okay.
Okay? We, we still operate, we still are going to get all of our reimbursements. Our kids would be free no matter what, whether the bill was passed in Massachusetts or not. And it's only a few states that have passed that legislation. So we still operate the same way we, we always do. Again, there is food waste. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not going to lie here because kids don't eat everything. Even if we put it on their plate, they say they want it, they don't eat it. It's inevitable. We've cut the waste back by going to offer versus serve, allowing them to go three out of the five components or two out of the four components. And I was going to add slides in like that, but I didn't want people to get so confused that their heads would spin. Because even, you know, I'll still go down the road when we're doing menu planning with my managers, because we have to meet certain requirements. Is that a two grain or is that a one grain? Do we need to put a, a, you know, two different items on there to make it two grain? So it is confusing. Again, we get the, the federal reimbursements as long as we meet those requirements.
Sure. And one last comment.
Sure.
I do appreciate the, the creativity of the student samplings. I mean, who hasn't gone to a food court at a mall? And they come at you with something on a toothpick. Try this, and then you end up buying that meal.
Right.
It's happened to me many times. So I think, so I think it's great that the students are actually supporting by, supported by students in their food choices and food quality. So it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll go to Mr. Fagan and then, okay.
Please.
Mr. Laura?
Thank you.
I was just doing ladies first, but that's okay.
Thank you, Benavilla.
Christine, your mic, Christine, your mic.
Christine, I'm sorry, Mrs. Fagan, your mic's not on.
Last year, one of the complaints we had with the high school students, particularly it was a lot of girls, the inavailability of the salad bars. Do you see that as being a problem again this year? Because I know the price of all that stuff is absolutely insane.
Produce is astronomical. To give you an idea, I was, uh, last year, one week's produce order basically equaled pre-pandemic what I would spend in a month. So it was, it was astronomical. Last year, we went away from the full salad bar, again, because stuff was so expensive. We had pre-made salads that we offered instead of the full salad bar. Again, depending on what the prices are for produce this year, we're either going to go to a, part of the plan is to buy a new merchandiser, an open air merchandiser, kind of like if you're going through an airport or whatever and there's pre-made food in it. Some of the food courts have them. We always have salad available. It's either pre-made. We used to do it as a salad bar. So you would come up and we would have an attendant standing there and they would make your salad for you. Again, we had a lot of labor issues last year. Believe it or not, coming out of COVID, we had more callouts last year than we did during COVID. So we were constantly under the gun of not having enough staff, you know, during those days. And you have to take a look at your operations and the, you know, we sold the least number of salads. So we were able to pre-make and put out so the kids could get the salad and grab a salad. But we just didn't have the full someone standing there, like, would you like tomatoes? Would you like this?
Are those things still frowned upon being, you know, given with all the things going on with COVID, people hovering over all this open food? Is that something that?
It, I think we're back to normal, to be honest with you. You know, everything's under a sneeze guard, everything's behind a, you know, a curtain. So I think we're past that. I think people have kind of got on with it. You know, there's still a few people, kids.
But then I see people all alone in their cars, driving with a mask on.
I was just going to say that. You still have some people, it's, there's still a few.
Some people on over it, so I just.
Yeah. No, I mean, when, when we came back from COVID and we got rid of the six foot, you know, rules, those kids were, oops, sorry. Those kids, everybody was right back on top of each other, I think. So she had that.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Laura?
Thank you, Benavilla. Presentation excellent, very thorough. Now, in, have you already administered surveys from last year's program to students and their input as to?
We haven't done a formal, no. I, we haven't since I've been there. And that's why I used to do it again in my districts when I was in Rhode Island. So it was one of the things, last year was, was a difficult year. Not a difficult year, but I got, we were kind of thrown into things and things kind of got going quickly. So this year, we're going to focus on the things that we, I wasn't able to focus on last year. Again, I've increased responsibilities on a couple of our operational folks. And they've taken on more of the responsibilities, taken them off my plate. So for the past four years, we had a director, assistant director. Last year was just me. So I was doing my job and the director's job, kind of. So I've peeled back some of my responsibilities. So I'm able to focus on stuff like initiatives that we want to roll out again, like surveys and stuff. So moving forward, it'll be an integral part of what we do.
I noticed that in the implementation, the creativity that you utilized, allowing students direction, proper choice of what they like and don't like, only makes it easier for them as they approach that, the area of dining. So I think it's a definite good program and one that I think will benefit the whole community.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Cabral?
And I'll be real brief. I just want to compliment Glenn on outstanding presentation. What I enjoyed most is when I was thinking about your presentation, Glenn, and hearing you go through it, it's, it's clearly evident that you have your feet on the ground, but you're also thinking long-term and you have your head above the clouds. Now, to see you thinking about 2024 already, now we haven't even started 23. So it, it just goes to show you that, you know, in, in our industry, education and running a city, as many of you know, you know, it's not a day-to-day operation. You have to be thinking long-term. So very thorough presentation, very impressed. Continued the great work.
Thank you.
Mr. Laura?
Question. Now, you said that the, the governor did this for one year.
Yep.
Now, in the event that it did not go on the second year, would your budget allow any way to compensate for the difference?
Well, we're going to, we'll operate again as that CEP designation up until 2027. So again, it doesn't impact us at all. The, the bill that she signed really impacts districts who aren't CEP. So they have the, the paid students, the, you know, it allows them to feed all their students and receive reimbursements. We do it anyway. This is just a, another layer put on top of us, basically. So it doesn't impact us. We're good till 2027.
Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mott.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, so that concludes that presentation. And we will now go to the Taunton Public School Summer Facility Projects Update.
As Mr. Jakes starts the presentation, I'd like to remind the school committee, last school year, the school committee approved the funding for the Director of Facilities. Previously, I had been doing that in, in conjunction with being the finance person. And then, of course, Superintendent Cabral, before that, when he was in my role as the Assistant Super, he was doing both of those as well. Now that we hired our new Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas, it has been very, it's been fantastic to have somebody that is out in our schools and really looking at the investments that we have been doing for our schools and making sure that our schools are keeping up with the proper protocols of cleaning, updating and all. So Mr. Freitas is going to be coming up and he's been a, a great deal. I can't sing his praises enough because he has been able to take that layer of me being in the schools, where he is in there, working with custodians, working with administration. And his first year has been a whopper of the year. And like I, as I'm going to begin this presentation, is that normally, every school year is crazy. Every school year, or I should say, with lots of projects. And every summer, there's lots of projects. But this summer, I cannot believe how much is going on. And I keep just telling Mr. Freitas that it's the calm before the storm. And believe me, it's been very interesting these last few, few months. So I'd like to bring up Mr. Freitas. And he will go ahead and walk us through what's been going on throughout our district for the summer projects, not even thinking about what's gone on in the past school year. Mr. Freitas?
Thank you, uh, thank you for your kind words, Assistant Superintendent Brendan Monahan. And thank you for Mr. Cabral also for this opportunity. So we're going to go right ahead into this. I'll keep it brief. So these are the list of schools that were, for this past summer, we've been doing our projects on. So Benjamin, so Benjamin Freeman, H. Bennett, Letty, Paul, Galligan, Parker, Martin, Taunton High School. At Benjamin Freeman Middle School, we are currently, I'm doing the assessment on the pavement area, which was the worst one out of all the schools, working with high paving. They're going to correct the issue with the potholes and the cracked pavement asphalt. They're going to mill it down for a couple of inches and then add new asphalt to those areas, which is, will be the entrance to Oakland, Oakland Campus and on the bus drop-off area in front of Freeman. And then we'll continue on with like a long-term plan as far as plan to do other paving through all our other schools in the district. Second here, on page four, we will have Bennett School is, um, at Bennett Elementary School, we are in the process of constructing a wall within the current guidance room that will add a separate space for a reset room. The room will be completed on August 17th. Also at Bennett, utilizing the Improving Ventilation and Air Quality Grant, we are looking with, uh, working with Jim Dorsey to replace the HVAC system in the gymnasium and in the kitchen cafeteria area. This will add air conditioning to those areas and estimated completion date of early November. Next, we have Letty Preschool. So Letty Preschool will also be utilizing the Improving Ventilation and Air Quality Grant by upgrading the entire HVAC system with ductless ceiling cassettes and mini splits. This will greatly improve the air quality and offer air conditioning throughout the entire building. So that would be great for the kids and staff members. We are looking to finish the interior work before August 25th and have a full completion date of September 15th for Letty Preschool. At Elizabeth Pole Elementary, we are currently, is one of the two schools that will be receiving a new vestibule in the building, right behind you, actually. The vestibule will add another layer of security to the building. Silver City Glass has been awarded the bid to complete the project. As of today, the supplies are set to arrive in about four to five weeks. Installation beginning mid to late September. And once supplies are received, installation will take about two weeks. Also at E-Pole, I am happy to announce that Elizabeth Pole will be receiving a new playground with an anticipated installation date of October 23rd. The new playground will replace the existing one and will comply with the 521 mask regulation. And next, our Galligan Elementary School, just about finished with the MSBA project. This project started in the summer of 2022 with the replacement of the boiler. The windows and doors were, are, were on back order. And for a while, due to supply issues, they were finally installed this summer. The windows and doors were, will be completed also on August 25th. And I'm truly impressed by the exterior look of this building. It looks really new and kudos to Billy Butler for revamping the exterior lights. So at night, if you could ever swing by there, it really transforms that building. It looks brand new. So South Coast, at Parker Middle School, South Coast Improvement Company has started the construction for the Manette School-Based Health Center. So far, the demolition of the space has been completed. They are now in the process of saw cutting and con, into the concrete to add their sanitary line and connect to the existing line in the building. Also for Parker is the second school that will be receiving a new vestibule at the front entrance. Supplies for this vestibule will arrive six to seven weeks. The installation should begin mid-October. The Parker Middle School vestibule would be completed within two weeks after supplies are received. The reason for the six to seven weeks timeline span as opposed to E-Pole's four to five weeks was just to color match the inside of the break metal around the windows and doors to match what's existing there inside Parker. Also for Martin Middle School, the final three schools of the utilizing the HVAC Q Grant, Jim Dorsey and Sons are set to replace the HVAC system, which will include air conditioning for the gymnasium and cafeteria. This project will begin after Letty's HVAC project is completed mid-September. So after they're done with Letty, they're going to hop into Martin. Then from Martin, they're going to hop into Bennett School. So Taunton High, Taunton High has quite a few projects going on right now. First, the commercial kitchen that was approved at the Long Range Plan Subcommittee Meeting is still awaiting bid. And the bid due date has been extended for an additional two weeks with the new due date of August 31st. Excited about that. Secondly, the Tiger Den Outdoor Patio with Landmark has begun construction and supplies have been ordered. The new Tiger Tots Playground is on the way with the contract being signed and finalize, uh, finalizing the equipment to be ordered this week. Once the equipment is ordered, we should have a timeframe for the. Once the equipment is ordered, we should have a timeframe for the installation date. That's another exciting playground that's gonna be happening. So also at Taunton High School, we'll have, we just finished up six water filling stations. All six water filling stations will be located through the second floor of the high school. The installation at Taunton High School will be completed by August 22nd. They just actually finished up today. And the end of, by the end of December, all Taunton Public Schools will have two water filling stations at each school. The Field House area will have a new security booth located near the stairway to the auditorium. I am working with a vendor to approve final drawings. This will have anticipated completion date of August 30. So that's the, like, if you're going up to the auditorium, on your left is a little inlet where they would usually house like the chairs and stuff for the gym. That's all been taken out. That's gonna be a new security booth that's gonna be placed there. Another exciting news is the installation of the Championship Mural has begun this week with the acid washing of that whole face of that brick wall there. The artist will begin the outline of the mural Thursday night, weather permitting. If you wanna go by at night, there will, basically, we have two lifts there. One's a scissor lift that's gonna hold the projector, and it's gonna emit that whole image on that building, and they're gonna trace it out and then paint it as well. So that's great. And who's, basically, who's painting that is working with Matt Bork, who is our graphic art teacher, and Matt and his cousin Phil. So Matt's the designer, and Phil is gonna be painting the mural. Also, we have begun the installation of LVT flooring in a few of our much-needed areas of the building. Luxury vinyl tile is a cost-effective, low maintenance flooring that we're using. The LVT has been installed in the senior lounge, as Glenn mentioned earlier, thanks to Mr. Cabral. And we are working at the moment with the main office and the nurse's office with a completion date of August 28th. And also, lastly, four custom fabricated security gates have been installed to each rooftop exits of Taunton High. So any questions or concerns?
All right, well, thank you very much for that presentation and that update. I will start with Mr. Laura and then Mr. Enos.
On the LVT floor, is that permanent?
Is that permanent?
Is it permanent, lactic texture, or is it?
Yeah, it's really thin. It's very durable. Out of all the flooring, that's probably one I would go with, with the high-traffic area. And it's, you know, it's low maintenance. It's ideal for certain situations. So I like that.
You're welcome. Mr. Enos?
Just to follow, what did we ever decide on the alternative high school? I know we discussed it with another, whatever, offer the awning?
Yeah, I actually asked Mr. Freitas to look into another potential remedy, which is, no, which is to paint it. Right, and that might be, that may be the most cost-effective measure to finalize that facility.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Freitas. I have a couple of concerns. First, let's start with the Oakland Campus, the paving project. With the weather, the way it's been, are we expect to be behind on that?
No, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna work even through the weekend.
Okay.
So we're not gonna, we definitely will be ready before he's, I gave the estimate of August 25th, but it's gonna be sooner than that.
Okay, that's good. The other concern I have, and these are a little bit more of a major concern, are these vestibules. First and foremost, we're looking at installation should begin mid to late September, right in the middle of the academic year. Are we anticipating that this is, construction's gonna be done outside of school hours or during school hours?
So this will be done outside of school hours.
So will not interfere with?
It won't even take that long, to be honest with you. So he's telling me two weeks, but roughly a week.
Okay. And while we're on that subject, and I really would stress if we can make it possible that all supplies are here before we start, because I don't wanna see where we're 75% of the way, and then we don't have, we have a backorder on something. I know you're very capable to do that, but just as a friendly reminder, because this is dealing not only with the security, but, you know, the normal day activities of the school, which we're starting in a couple of weeks. Same goes for the, I guess, the Parker Middle School vestibule. With that, that's gonna start in, what, mid-October because of colors, I believe you said?
Yeah.
Okay. And again, make sure everything's here, so we don't have to stop a project midway. And let's see, I guess that's about it. Yeah, I'm just concerned, you know, with projects starting during the school year. I know it's out of your control, and it all goes with bid awards and so forth, but if the people we're working with, you know, make sure that it doesn't impede the school day. Like you said, the paving company, high paving company, will be doing stuff on weekends and so forth. I think that's great. That's my only concern. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mrs. Fagan?
When you look out here, are those doors gonna stay here the way they are, and then there's gonna be another?
Right, so there's another added?
Little narrow space, and then another space?
Correct.
And is that for safety issues?
Your mic, Christine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So that, so basically what you're seeing there, we're gonna mimic that on another, right where those two columns are?
Yeah, I see the columns.
Yeah.
You have to go through a lot of doors to get in here.
You will. That's another added measure of security, so they don't have access to come right into a school. They'll have to?
But don't some of the kids get dropped off right in the front with the buses here? They're all, they're all coming over there? Okay. Thank you.
Superintendent Cabral?
This is just more anecdotal. I love seeing the matching flooring at the high school, and I told Mr. Freitas, before he retires, or before he resigns, before he leaves Taunton Public Schools, Taunton High School's flooring will match consistently throughout the entire building. That is, that is our charge.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, all right, excellent. Thank you so much for your time this evening and your presentation. Can I get a motion to go back to the regular order of business?
A motion to go back to the second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none opposed, so voted. We are now on the Superintendent's Report.
So I think we've heard enough regarding the implementation of universal free lunch, which is the first item on my Superintendent's Report. I'll just mention that in the back of the school committee packet, you should receive this PowerPoint. I had the pleasure of serving and advocating for this bill, and I believe on the third slide, you'll see a quote that I was quoted when I provided testimony and support of a sustainable future for our rural schools, which also included the Meals Bill. Second item in my report is just a quick update on summer school. We just wrapped up, we will be wrapping up our summer school program. Overall, we had almost 10% of our student body, just under 700 students, participated in summer school offerings pre-K through 12. At the elementary level, students are focused on project-based learning, where they explored topics such as animals, insect discovery, oceanography and human relationships. Also at the elementary schools, kids enjoy time fine-tuning their reading skills, their writing skills and their math skills. And one of the components that we add every summer, but we typically don't discuss it, is that we do pre-test the students when they arrive for summer school, and then we do post-test them to see what they have retained. And for example, one student in the report, you'll notice, you know, had an 86% accuracy before starting in the reading summer component, and when the student finished or completed the program, they were at 96% accuracy. So again, to help reduce the amount of learning loss, it does benefit students to attend our summer programs. At the middle school level, was a heavy focus on STEM. Something I'm thinking about implementing at our upcoming retreat is maybe have the school committee members design of participating in egg drop contest, which is STEM-based. I think you guys would enjoy all of that, and maybe we'll make an omelet or two. Parker School, again, they focused on STEM, Greek mythology, there was even some yoga and cooking. And at the high school, 150 students completed summer requirement courses, combined for a total of 2,000 credits, where we covered at Taunton High School. And at the Taunton Alternative High School, you know, they were busy as usual. Since being, since being founded 10 years ago, the Taunton Alternative High School has graduated 704 students. So that's 704 members of our community who would not, who would not have received a high school diploma if not for the Taunton Alternative High School. And last but not least, we had, we had, which was hard to believe, our sixth all-admin retreat, or my sixth all-admin retreat, Superintendent of Taunton Public Schools. So on day one, I kicked things off with a tone-setting portion, where we talked about our focus for the upcoming year, and we talked about and celebrated some of our achievements from the previous year, but also, again, looking towards the future. We know that 2022 was our stabilization year, 2023 was a year for healing, and we know there's a lot more healing to be done. In 2024, that's gonna be our transformation year. So that's kinda how we're looking long-term on the trajectory for improvement for the Taunton Public Schools. Year one focused on our multilingual learners. We were blessed to have Ayana Cooper, who is renowned for this work throughout the nation, to facilitate the day. And each administrator was charged with creating three goals that will support our multilingual learners, which we'll revisit in December, and then we will assess in June. And on day two, we had CLE, which is the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. They came in and provided us with a morning DEI activity, which was also a team-building and a group-building experience. And what I loved about the activity, it's an activity that all our principals can take, our department heads can take back to their building and use as a day-one activator. And then the second half of the day, I got to sit back and relax as my leadership team facilitated more of a planning and visioning meeting or portion of the day with our principals and directors to help plan agendas and calendars in common. So overall, it was a great two-day retreat, looking forward to new teacher orientation, which you have the save the date on your table, and then I'll provide you with more information regarding convocation, and you should expect that information in one of my weekly newsletters. With that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Motion to accept the report.
Motion second on discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have an opportunity to go and say hello to everybody, was there for about a half hour or so, and I just wanna say, on behalf of all the administrators, I thank you very much for the ice cream sundae bar, school committee. They enjoyed it thoroughly, right, Mrs. Monahan? Thank you. So it was a, it was a great, great place to be and a great time to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. And Superintendent, if you don't mind, I just wanna add to your report, because it seems like an appropriate time. I just wanna let the community know that our Taunton, City of Taunton Summer Celebration is coming up, and that is on August 25th. So it's gonna be a really fun day. It's been a great tradition for our community and one of our most popular events of the year. So it's August 25th, which is a Friday. It's from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, totally family-friendly, tons of fun activities for your kids, all free. And then there's also gonna be food trucks. We have a band, and of course, we are gonna have a great firework display. So all this information is on the City of Taunton website and Facebook page, and we hope that we see everyone again this year. So, thank you. Okay, so, I'm sorry, there was a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none opposed, so voted. All right, now we are on administrative business. We have a staffing report. Do we need, I need to do anything?
Motion to accept the report.
And if I could just ask, so there's also a teacher vacancy report. Are we just gonna accept that as well, or is there gonna be discussion? Because we'll do both at the same time.
Is there gonna be discussion on teacher?
Okay, so we'll do the staffing report. There's a motion to accept.
I'll second all that.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none opposed, so voted. We will go to the teacher vacancy report.
Thank you, Mayor, if I may. I know we have this in front of us, this was issued on August 10th. Where are we at today, August, what's today, 17th, 18th?
16th.
16th, 16th of August compared to August 10th.
We're in much better shape, and I can provide you with an updated report tomorrow. I do not have the current up-to-date or real-time numbers, but we do have this on the Google Sheet, which is updated at the end of every day, so I can provide you with updated numbers tomorrow.
That'd be nice. Thank you, Superintendent. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Motion to accept the report.
Second.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, none opposed, so voted. Subcommittee reports. We have Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Fiore.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Committee on Finance and Law met this evening with myself, Dr. DeMello and Mr. Enos. First item on the agenda was a request for disposal of surplus equipment from Mulcahy School, and that was tabled because the administration wants to review some of the items because they were purchased relatively recently, and we wanna look toward possible reuse rather than disposing. Then we had two bills payable warrants, actually three, with some addition. First, a fiscal year '23 warrant for $29,903.80, which was approved. Then, originally, we were presented with a $568,617.05 warrant for fiscal '24, but the administration received a last-minute invoice from Dorsey and Sons for work under the HVAC grant that was mentioned earlier. That was a total of $303,000. And because of timing, it wouldn't have been possible to pay that until mid-September if we didn't take action on it this evening. It's grant funding, so it doesn't involve appropriation. And so we agreed on approving an updated warrant that was totaling $871,617.05. Then, finally, we received an update on the work orders under facility due. Some of the things were also raised in Mark's report a little later, but making progress considerably on a lot of our work, and a lot of, a lot more work is to be done in the next couple of weeks before school opens. And with that, we adjourned.
Move recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. Now we go to unfinished business. The first?
New business.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. New business.
Yeah, this is just, I'm just gonna hang a shingle. This is more of a placeholder that we have received our preliminary MCAS data, and it is, again, still embargoed, so I won't go into a lot of detail, but the administration, myself, Mr. Barata, and our principals, department heads, we are analyzing the data, and we plan on having a very thorough and comprehensive presentation once the MCAS data has been, embargo has been lifted, which will probably be sometime late October, early November.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent. Now we will go to unfinished, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. George?
No problem. New business. I was wondering if we could add a special programs meeting to new business?
For the future?
For the future, yes.
Oh, we can work together, discover a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
So do we need a motion for that?
Subcommittee will reach out to its members.
Okay. All right. Finished business. Third reading for Director of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Job Description for reconsideration.
So I added this item back to the agenda for reconsideration. So I'm hoping that someone on the committee will entertain a motion that the third reading for the Director of Equity and Inclusion be given reconsideration for a third reading. And if there are five votes, then I was advised by Attorney Gay, then we can move to a third and final reading.
So, checking on that.
There has to be somebody else here at this meeting, doesn't it?
Excuse me?
We made a motion. Hold second.
Mr. Laura, Mr. George.
Mr. Fiore.
Yeah. I think this is going to require us to take a vote on suspending the rules, because technically we've already put it through a third reading that failed, and there really isn't a proper procedure to reinstate it unless we suspend the rules. So I'll, I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules to allow for the third reading.
Second.
So there is a motion on the table to suspend the rules.
It's a roll call.
Second. On a roll call, please.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Viera?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes.
The motion passes.
I move that we resubmit it for the third reading.
Second.
Motion in second.
Roll call.
On a roll call, please.
Mr. Enos?
Yes.
Mr. Fiore?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes no. Mr. Viera?
No.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Ms. Laura?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes.
Motion passes. So. Action item update?
Yes, I do have some comments. So I, I believe we should add to the calendar a couple of events that were, actually, one was spoken about this evening, which is the October 14th dedication at the Mulcahy School in the open house. I'd like, if a motion could be made to include that into the school committee planner, I mean, into the action item update.
All moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted.
There are other items that will be coming down the pike. There is the shovel in the ground with Manette, I believe. Mr. Superintendent wants to elaborate upon that with convocation.
I need to get back to, I need to do the more research.
Okay, sorry. I was premature in that. And convocation day, I don't see it on the planner or the action item update. Do we need to address that at all?
Convocation day is the other thirty.
Yep.
You'll receive information regarding convocation day from my office and you'll also receive an update in my weekly newsletter.
Okay. And that covers it. So the motion, Mayor, for the inclusion of the October 14th in the planner.
Motion, was there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted.
Quick thing, I apologize. Under new business, I, is it all right if I ask, refer something to Mr. Cabral, to the administration? I was at a Head Start meeting this morning, the school committee representative to that, that organization. And one of the questions that was, that was asked was about when you do your kindergarten, you know, when everybody starts signing up for kindergarten, the registration, that you always ask if the students have had schooling prior to going into kindergarten and you always ask where. And they were wondering if you have any data as to whether or not that makes a difference in the education of the students and where the kids may have gone. Because I know there was the Brickhouse School that, that was one and there were other places. Did you, did you ever utilize any of that data?
I'll have to speak to Director of Student Services and our power, we need to speak with our special education director to see what type of data we have and if we can analyze the data to extrapolate that type of information.
Yeah, because they were just wondering that, that if you, if you were asking for it, that you might have utilized it for something. The other thing that they're trying to do, and it probably, you know, they always say it takes a village, and they were talking about that they're having a lot of the same problems that we're having with the social, emotional, and the younger, younger children. And if there were any programs out there, I have thought they could possibly work together and find where, because everybody's talking about you can't, when you, sometimes when you send children for evaluations, they're sending you to places six months later. And so they didn't know if you had any advice for any of that. So I, I meant to bring that up sooner. I apologize, but.
And because it's a referral, we can't like really discuss it and debate it, but.
The only thing I'll say is, we are working with Head Start or Triumph Bank. They are, they are working on a focus group with us to talk about how we can best service the needs of our community.
Well, I think that they're still interested in doing that. So I, I was asked because I was, I said, I'll be there tonight, but I know that one of the things they were, and I know you were there earlier, I just missed you.
Oh.
It's because of all the traffic patterns in the city.
It's because of all the road work we're doing.
I know, but I mean, you're on the magical mystery tour everywhere you go, but anyway, thank you for giving me that opportunity, everybody.[1784.54]